Thank you.
Well, a very warm welcome again to our series of reflections and study on the letter to the Hebrews. First, just a little bit of housekeeping. I want to apologize to our online viewers coming in on the Facebook and YouTube livestream for the session's poor audio last week. Father Tim and I have rectified that issue, hopefully, although this is now the moment for comments to stream in if there is, for any reason, still some persistent sound issues. In fact, what I'm doing at this moment is calling up Facebook on my phone so that I can monitor those comments as they come in. So please do feedback that to us. And actually, also, as we go through the session today, and when we talk about particular texts and particular themes, do comment. Do comment on the Facebook feed, do comment on YouTube, and these comments can feed into our discussions. If not today, then on future weeks or at separate times over the course of Lent. Now, last week, I gave a rather sweeping overview of the letter to the Hebrews, its various different themes. The themes that I narrowed down into three separate categories. The first of them was the theme of priesthood, which we will focus on today. The second was the theme of sacrifice, and particularly the sufficient and perfect sacrifice of Jesus on the cross, which features later on in the letter to the Hebrews. And that third theme, if you recall, was that slightly more shadowy, difficult-to-pin-down theme, which was this discussion that the author to the Hebrews makes about moral life, about family life, about the community of Christians that are reading this text in the first century, and how they, just like us, are coming to grips with the life lived in Christ, how they're coming to grips as a community of people in the fellowship of the faith. So priesthood then. One of the very familiar landmarks of St. James's is the East Window, which is to my right over here, the window that stands above the high altar. And it's remarkable for a whole host of different reasons, but this early piece of stained glass, this piece of late 19th century stained glass, is, I think, rather remarkable in the way in which it depicts the various stages of human redemption through Christ. First of all, you have the depiction of the Last Supper, Jesus and his disciples breaking bread together and sharing wine. And this great narrative of the institution of the Eucharist is shown in this scene in the upper room. Next, if you move up another window, you have this very large depiction of the crucifixion. Christ nailed to the cross very much at the forefront of our minds, those of us who've just walked the way of the cross here at St. James's this evening. And then if you go up again, you see the great scene of Jesus risen, ascended, and glorified with all of the different windows around this great piece of stained glass celebrating and rejoicing in that fact. And today, we're going to look at, if you like, the first theme that the bottom-most window depicts, the work of priesthood, the work that Christian priests undergo in today's church, the breaking of bread in the Eucharist, also called Holy Communion, all the Mass, and the High Priest, the perfect priest, towards which all of those priests in the church point and direct their offerings of the Eucharist, namely, Jesus Christ. Priesthood is caught up in aspects of the church's institutions. It's sometimes a rather legalistic term. It's a term that we perhaps shy away from when we're thinking about our own personal faith, and that's perfectly understandable. It's, if you like, much easier to grapple with the notions of divine love, with the omnipotence of God and His grace, because these are things that we often lack in our own eyes, these in our own sight and our own experience. We need God's grace. We need that which we have not. And there's a lot of emotionality caught up in the words love, the word grace, the word truth. But priesthood is a bit difficult, because priesthood seems to imply a transaction, a complicated going back and forth between ordinary human beings and Jesus, the perfect man and God. So it's tricky for us. So one of the reasons why we examine it in Lent might be to open up our understanding of priesthood. And I'd like to think that as we go through these sessions, one of the really important takeaways we'll have on Christ as a priest is the fact that Christ is a priest who, if you like, administers and takes charge over our notions of love as well. It's not just this little thing that's going on in the corner that is a sort of functional aspect of coming to church on a Sunday. It's a real and living part of our faith. So it's important, I think, to not get too caught up on that word, priesthood, as being one that's devoid of our real contact with Jesus, Jesus who redeems us, Jesus who saves us from our sins. But that said, the Eucharist and priests today are relevant, because in some ways, everything that we do in church is a response to something new that Jesus brings into the world. Our worship, our relationship with people, whether they're Christians or non-Christians, all of it's caught up in what we call the New Testament, the New Covenant, this fundamental shift in what humanity can do in Christ. And the Eucharist is one of those things. The Eucharist is a sacrament, as we profess at St. James's, and a gift to us to allow that channel of grace to enter into our lives, and to allow the New Covenant to become a living reality, to become a sign of that reality. So today, we're going to have a little look at three chapters from Hebrews, which focus particularly on this notion of priesthood. The letter to the Hebrews darts in and out of this theme all the time. It gets a little bit distracted, we might say, from time to time with all of these moral issues, but the point that comes back again and again is the issue of Christ's priesthood, the idea that Christ is this perfect mediator. Mediator, that word we often hear spoken of in prayers in church, Christ our mediator. Christ is the perfect go-between, the perfect liaison, the perfect messenger between God the Father and the needs of man, the need of man and men and women for grace. I'm just going to race aside and get myself a copy of... Thank you, Father Tim. So I want us to use as our food for thought for this session the series of five quotations from the middle chapters of Hebrews, each of which, I think, draw out some really important credentials of Jesus that we can talk about. And I'd like to start by looking at Hebrews chapter three, right at the beginning. And what I've done, for those of you who are here in person, I printed out all of the chapters that we're going to need today. There's no need to get lost in the text today. So if you just open up your booklets, you'll find that Hebrews 3, Hebrews 5, and Hebrews 7 are printed, and we'll have a little look through those in a minute. But I want to start with this notion of High Priest. The author to the Hebrews writes, at the beginning of Hebrews 3, after he's set out his target audience and some of his more important themes, he says, "Consider Jesus." He invites us to reflect. He invites us to this meditation. "Consider Jesus, the apostle and High Priest of our confession." In other words, let's cut away all of this complicated notion of rules, regulations, Israel, Melchizedek, all these words we find in Hebrews. Let's bring it down to the basics. This letter is about considering who Christ is and the two most important things that we think about when we come to think about Christ, His being an apostle, a fancy word for being a messenger, and then His notion of being a priest, this idea of being a representative between men and women before God. So I'd just like to pause there for a second and ask you, what first comes to your mind when you think about the word priest? Is it a positive term? Is it something that you find, like I was mentioning earlier, quite difficult? Or what do we think? What do we think priest, actually? What's the emotional response that we get to the word? Because we hear it so often in church. But what do we think? What's our response to a word like that?
Well, in the Old Testament, it says that everybody went to confession with a priest, you know, and they must sacrifice and stuff. So they were like, they immediately went to God and the people. But now we see in the New Testament that Jesus is our Jesus. So we don't get anything wrong.
Yeah.
So we don't need him. We can be here, we can go straight to Christ. So He is our priest.
Yeah.
So, you know, so anything we need or anything we, you know, we can address with, we can just go straight to Jesus. We don't need a priest. But of course, yes, we have churches if we have priests, you know, to go through all the, you know, different rituals and all that.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a really, thank you so much for that. I think it's a really interesting point about sort of simplification and streamlining, if I can use that term, that really comes to mind when we think about the Christian notion of priesthood. One of the, I think, one of the things that thinkers about this text often highlight is the idea that there are all of these different types of figures in the Old Testament. You've got prophets, you've got apostles or messengers, you've got angels kind of coming in there and acting between God and people. You've got all sorts of people who are there because they're representing God in some way. And what Christ seems to do, and what the author of the Hebrews seems to be trying to tease out, is that actually all of these different things, all of these different characteristics and these job roles seem to collapse in into the person of Jesus. In other words, we don't need to, you know, it's one of the things that we see in church life, I think, you know, when we come to when we come to Mass on Sunday, or when we come to church at all, you know, we don't go to a different person to get married. We don't go to a different church because we want to receive communion. We don't go to a different church so that we can get this particular corner of our faith. We sort of think of the parish family as being whole of itself, because we're all gathered around one altar. We're all gathered into one place in Christ, in the body of Christ, by virtue of our baptism. So yeah, I think priesthood for Christians, really important to remember that, like you say, going straight to God, that mediation that comes through Jesus alone, which is a big game changer for this community. What do we think about the notion that, you know, that priests even exist in the church? I mean, does that seem a contradiction if we're talking about Jesus being our High Priest, and then we have lots and lots of priests who are ordained and set aside for God. They're ordained in services that are often quite formal and elaborate, like the Old Testament. Do we think that's something that's incompatible? Do we think that's something that's...
We need to look at it later. Because, okay, you know, we call you priest, we call you father. So it's what you're doing in place of what Christ is doing, but, you know, we're not looking to you to solve our issues or solve our problems. We're still looking to Christ, but we know you are there to, as a shepherd, you know, bringing in the sheep from the outside, guiding them.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that this is one area where Hebrews spends a lot of this third chapter making a very, a series of comparisons between Jesus and Moses. And one of the things, of course, that distinguishes the credentials of Jesus being the fact that not only is He, you know, you're talking about sort of the way, you know, lateral thinking or kind of like top-down thinking. In some ways, Jesus, we have to think in a top-down way, because not only is Jesus transmitting to us things about God and teaching us about God and being a messenger, being a priest, He's also the author of life. He's also, you know, incarnate, born of the Virgin Mary, in the world, a human being, but before all time. And so the point of reference is completely different. Moses, okay, fundamental figure in, a priestly figure in the sense that he proclaimed the law and he set those rules into practice and that sense of society. But he was just transmitting. He was receiving and then passing on, rather than actually being fundamentally caught up in our redemption, in the fact that he was himself divine. He was the author. He was the starter offer of all that's going on. So really interesting.
You say that we are more in priesthood.
Yeah.
So how is that connected?
So this is a very interesting point where the letter to the Hebrews seems to be using priesthood in quite a different way from the epistles of Paul and Peter. I mean, Peter is actually, in some ways, the closest that you get to someone who might have been the author to Hebrews because of this overlap. It's a very interesting discussion to have. So the priesthood of what would be called, in that context, the priesthood of all believers, the priesthood that is, if you like, a sharing in Christ's victory, sharing in Christ's sacrifice, sharing in that atonement, that bringing together of man and God after their separation. It's a really important theme, which I think actually focuses much more on the sacrifice of Christ, because priesthood and sacrifice are very much linked things. If we think about the Old Testament, the offering of the altar of the priests in the Old Testament. And I think Peter is trying to draw out a really important aspect of the more sacrificial side, the idea that when we come together in Christian worship as one body of Christ, we're sharing in, if you like, in the merits of Christ's sacrifice. Our royal priesthood is the priesthood of Christ who has made atonement for all of our sins. And I feel like it's part of the Christian identity to be able to wear Christ's sacrifice, to wear Christ's priesthood. But it's not easy, I don't think, actually. I think that's one of the, I mean, one of the challenges I have with the text. It's not easy to take that notion and then to look at Christ as a High Priest here, which seems to be quite formal and it seems to be quite, like we were talking about last week, you mentioned, I can't remember which of you it was who mentioned it, but we're talking about the idea of it being, you know, social fellowship. It's not just about one person versus, you know, locking yourself away in a room and praying, although of course, Jesus does tell us to do that as well. Even more complicated. But it's important to remember that the two notions are slightly different, and they do have to be held together. Next week, when we talk more about sacrifice, I think some of those questions will answer themselves. But thanks for the question, because I think it is difficult, and we are called to reflect Christ's priesthood in ourselves, not just by looking to one sort of idea. It's one of the problems with Hebrews. There's a lot of ideas which can make the living faith of the church sometimes difficult to draw out of the text. And Hebrews 3 goes on to talk, to move back into this sort of moral ethical critique. "Take care, brethren," he says in Hebrews 3:12, "lest there be any of you an evil, in any, in any of you an evil, unbelieving heart, leading you to fall away from the living God, but exalt one another day by day." For, and this is where I think the Peter-like words really creep in, actually. "For we share in Christ, if only we first hold our confidence to the end." And so this idea actually that we're having, we're making this confession. It's really important. We're making a confession in Jesus our High Priest, which is knitting our faith together. Moving on to the second of those five quotes I've sort of set before us today as points of interest and points of contemplation and prayer. The second of those is a few verses into the fifth chapter, fifth chapter of Hebrews, where we start to see these interesting ideas in the Old Testament being used in new ways. The idea that the Old Testament is not something just to be read as an isolated text from a culture of ancient Israel, but actually, to this community and to us today, it's foreshadowing Christ. It's part of the divine plan that the author of the Hebrews thinks, that these texts point us towards a reality in Jesus. And he says in Hebrews 5:9, "Being made perfect, He," that is Jesus, "became the source of eternal salvation to all who obeyed Him, being designated by God High Priest after the order of Melchizedek." And so here we see this figure, Melchizedek, a figure from all the way back in the book of Genesis, creeping into the way in which Hebrews wants to set out its notion of why Jesus is a High Priest better than all the priests that have come before, all of the priests, not only actually of the Old Testament, but of our notion of priesthood itself, because there's something about priesthood that seems to be coded into our DNA a little bit. The idea that when we get organized as a human society, whether that's in the Bronze Age, whether that's in 2025, whether that's in 2135, or whatever the date might be, there seems to be something that wants to communicate humankind with a greater reality or a greater need, or, if you like, the notion of justice. Think about our justice system, for example. We have judges that are mediating the law. They're acting as representatives of the government, of the state, of our justice system. But here, he says, there's a perfect representation of priesthood in Jesus. "He was sent as Son of God as a mediator and redeemer," and the way that he does this mediation is by his priesthood. And so in other words, the subject matter of the priesthood here is the deal-breaker, because the subject matter is God Himself wanting to bring about this reconciliation between fallen humanity, humanity that doesn't always get things right, and then God. And through the act of the cross, He does that through His priesthood, through this term priesthood. Let's just have a brief look at chapter five and see if we can sort of draw out a few questions from that. It starts off with kind of giving this little bit of a history lesson at the beginning of Hebrews 5. The author says, "For every High Priest chosen from among men is appointed to act on behalf of men in relation to God, to offer gifts and sacrifices for sins." And then going on, it says, "So also Christ did not exalt Himself to be made a High Priest, but was appointed by Him, who said to Him, 'Thou art My Son; today I have begotten thee.'" And the question I want to ask is, we've talked a little bit about priests and the notion of mediation and the notion of what priests are today in the church. What do we think the actual carrying out of Christ's job description as a priest looked like? Because if we look a little bit further on in Hebrews 5, there's this big emphasis on Christ's suffering. There's this great emphasis on Christ as a son, Christ as a son who is obedient to His Father. And part of that obedience is about priesthood, about being a perfect go-between. Do we have any thoughts about that? I mean, this is a bit of an odd line, isn't it? "In the days of His flesh, Jesus offered up prayers and supplications with loud cries and tears." So we've just walked the way of the cross, where this particular, this particular verse is describing Jesus's passion. So there's this notion here that actually priesthood is not just a judge with a hammer doing all the mediation between God and man. There's this idea that there is a participation in Christ's, in human suffering, in life and weakness as part of the credentials that make Jesus a good priest. There's a sort of experience, this perfect experience of what it means to be God and what it means to be human, that makes the priesthood of Christ different and which makes it enter into our hearts in a really particular way.
But this, this picture is before He goes to the cross.
Indeed.
He gets praise, you know, tears, you know, you know, like normal people, you know, He prays. So He doesn't, He doesn't show that, you know, that He's a priest here. He's praying to His Father, like, you know, even when He's on the cross, He's saying, you know, if you think, I mean, sorry, get somebody, you know, take this away from me, take this cup away from me, okay? Not mine, but yours. He's still praying, like one of us would. Not mine, but yours, he's still praying, like one of us would. And then now saying that he's a priest, because he has gone through for our salvation at the cross and now he's become a priest.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, no, absolutely. Um, and it's, it's, and, and all of, you know, the fascinating thing is that in the course of that, in the, in the course of that, that learning of obedience, as, as, as Hebrews puts it, we suddenly begin to realize that priesthood is not just a functional thing.
Right, kind of put something in there. I think one of the dangers is seeing Christ's priesthood purely in terms of the cross. The cross is where I think it reaches its climax. The whole life of Christ is an offering. His whole life is a priestly offering of where Adam said no, Christ in his humanity says yes. So therefore the whole, the whole of his life is a priestly offering, the one that we couldn't learn because we're sinners. Christ can make it because he's both God and divine and human. And so therefore he can do a thing that we cannot do. And so I think the priestly thing is, is a whole life of Jesus, then rather than just on one event, on the cross, where it reaches its absolute climax, but never ever.
But it's also totally reflecting to us that, you know, he was human as well.
That's what I mean, because, because, because Adam is sin is to say no to God. I will not adore you, I will not worship you. And then we get the problems that we get in. Christ comes as a human being and lives human life as it was meant to be lived, God, God-faced. Um, and so therefore that, 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 I'll talk about on Saturday when I see a priest thing. His humanity and his divinity is absolutely crucial. He, he has to be human, so that he can offer worship as humans are able to do it, but we can't do it. And, and God and Christ can do it.
Yep, thank you Father so much. Uh, for those on the live stream, talking about Father Tim, talking about the idea of, um, the idea of the whole of Christ's earthly life being an act of giving, being an act of service, which we can think about in terms of, of, of priesthood, not necessarily just that moment of, 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 um, of, of the cross, that moment of, if you like, the culmination of, of all of that priesthood on the cross. I'd also think, I mean, just to sort of, my own two, two cents on this particular, um, this particular sort of idea of taking the whole of, the whole of Christ, when we think about priesthood, would be again to point to, uh, to point to the institution of the Eucharist, to point to those moments in Christ's life where he instituted means by which the grace of God could get to us and could reach us out of the love and mercy of the Father. Uh, and I think it's really important to remember that the institution of the Eucharist, the meeting in the Seneca in the Upper Room, happened before Christ's passion and death. And, uh, I don't think that the timing's accidental. You know, it leads us to ask the question, well, you know, if, if someone hypothetically were to, uh, you know, if Father Tim had lived, uh, in 30 AD and were to try and offer the Mass between that moment and the passion and death of Christ, what would that, what would have happened? Leads to sort of interesting, uh, amusing counterfactual history for those who are sort of interested in that kind of, uh, philosophical kind of debates. Um, but it's important, just in the basic sense, that, that, that Christ made a really important offering as a priest by breaking bread and offering wine with his followers in the Upper Room. And, and we can't dismiss that as one of the most powerful resonating channels of Christian grace to this very day. A summit of our Christian life is gathering around an altar, an altar which points us to the cross, but an altar which also points us to, like we were saying last week, fellowship and, and the mediation that's caught up in all of that. So really, I think really important to look at the whole of Christ's life. And there's a point that I'll make just a little bit later on, if we've got time, about that. So the fifth chapter of Hebrews, just to cap that for a moment, is introducing this notion of the special way in which Christ's, uh, divine, uh, um, being, his being God, is working with his human experience to make him into this mediation redeemer, which we call the perfect high priest. Going on, uh, to a series of passages, which I think are really quite fascinating and which really do need, do need a bit of kind of teasing out and discussion in chapter seven.
Can I just ask about this order of what people?
Yeah.
In the Old Testament. So isn't that Jesus in the Old Testament, that asks for, you know, the able and able to fight?
Exactly, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But here it says that he is, um, a priest in the order of what people are hiding.
Yeah.
So, so it, it doesn't mean that this order now is higher than the order of what people in the Old Testament?
Yeah, I mean, so this is just what I was going on to talk about. I mean, so there's a really, so, I mean, it's quite a, I think sometimes it's quite a, uh, an odd story to get our heads around, because we've got quite a lot of characters going on here. We've got Abraham offering, um, you know, offering tit, tit, tithes, um, uh, and all this sort of thing. I think the really important thing that the letter to the Hebrews is trying to draw out with the Melchizedek story is the idea that Melchizedek is, um, is, is what in formal words we'd call a type of Christ. He's a foreshadowing of Christ. Uh, and he says that for quite a few different reasons. Um, you know, the first, the first reason would be the fact that, you know, this mysterious kind of figure, Melchizedek, uh, just like with Jesus, seems to lack this, you know, very clear human genealogy. We've got to remember that Jesus's birth was virginal birth, you know, of the Virgin Mary. St Matthew gives us in his first chapter, a very, um, long list of the genealogy for, uh, Joseph, whose feast day is today, as it happens. But that's a genealogy for a foster father. It's not a genealogy for Jesus himself. And then we can talk about, uh, the, the Marian, that Mary, um, the Virgin Mary's family tree as well. But he, he first of all draws out this comparison, that we've got this high priest, which the patriarchs of the Old Testament pay tithings to, pay a loyalty to. And he's someone that, as, uh, as chapter seven puts it, is without father, without mother, without genealogy. But, and this is the important point, he resembles the son of God, um, in the sense that he, he seems, uh, to continue forever, the idea that he's out of time, in other words. Hebrews is picking on this particular story as an example of, of, of a character who is timeless, who isn't gridded on to the notion of the offerings of sacrifices with a strict line of descendants like we have in the Levitical priesthood and in the priesthood of Aaron, who was the partner, um, the, the assistant with, um, with, with Moses, um, in the book of Exodus onwards. So that's one thing, the idea that he doesn't have that family tree. Um, I mean, and there, and there are quite a few things that, and just to have a look at the text would be, I think would be a good thing, um, to do. So we have that idea of without genealogy. And then we also have that idea of, um, and then we also have that idea, as I say, of Abraham, the patriarch, giving him, giving him tithings. The idea that Melchizedek receives, um, receives, receives filth, receives loyalty from these significant characters. And then the Hebrews goes on to say, well, look, Melchizedek was receiving, although he seemed to have no family at all, he was receiving this, this, this loyalty and this respect from earthly people, from rulers, from patriarchs. Well, here comes Christ, who, it's exactly the same situation, but Christ as the son of God is receiving now this loyalty in his priesthood from everyone. And indeed, not just from mortal men and women, but from God, his father, whom, uh, who has sent him. Uh, so I think quite a few things can be teased out there in terms of this Melchizedek personality.
If you, Levite, 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 Levite.
Yeah, yeah, what Christ do you mean? Or, or were you? Milcah? Indeed, indeed, but, but he was, but he was, if you like, foreshadowed in that. Yeah, yeah, I know, I know exactly what you're saying. Um, whereas, whereas Hebrews is trying to separate from that strict lineage and talk about, well, how can we talk about Christ in a timeless way? How can we talk about Jesus in a way that, 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 that basically, you know, basically how can we talk about Jesus of a new law, of a new covenant, rather than Jesus that's locked into a particular family tree? Um, and that's really significant for us as Christians, because although we talked about all of, of Jesus's, uh, power, if you like, as a mediator, we go straight to Christ. We can look to our high priest who is praying for us, praying with the Father. If that stuff has to be mapped on to a particular line of descendants, if it's relevant to a particular people only, in a particular place, in a particular legal way, how on earth are we going to make sense of that as Christians who are called to live a life where our faith ought to be universal? Our faith ought to be open to all who come in faith to baptism, to be redeemed, to be saved by the love of God. And so Hebrews is, is bringing out this really important part about Christianity, which is its universality. It's love, if you like, the love that Christ represents by his priesthood, that, you know, doesn't care about background, doesn't care about time or particular cultural traditions, but cares ultimately about something that will last forever. So I think that's really important, you know, if we start to think about how we can apply this to our, our, our Christian lives today. I put a point on the front of our sheet, um, one of the, um, one of the next quotations, which I think is a, a good one just to reflect on, uh, a little bit further on in chapter seven. Uh, chapter seven, verse 12, priesthood, uh, sorry, for when there is a change in the priesthood, there is necessarily a change in the law, um, as well. So in other words, Christ's priesthood is the, it can be the starting point for our reflection when we think about literally Old Testament and New Testament, or Old Covenant and New Covenant. And we see this idea of priesthood and law going together if we just reflect, like we were doing a moment ago, on our justice system. You know, if we, if we have a change in, I, you know, if you follow politics, you will have noticed this is a very important thing in places like America, where you have the Supreme Court. If you have a change in the, in the judges, if you have a change in the personalities on board, we're going to have a change in the system as well. And what Hebrews is saying is that, you know, the new priesthood that we now have in Christ is reflecting, uh, you know, the law of love that is now reigning, thanks, you know, thanks to the incarnation of Jesus, thanks to the redemptive work of Jesus on the cross, but also in his life. And so he's saying that Christ is more perfect than what came before, because he's doing something different. He's wrought a, uh, he's wrought a very different kind of life to be lived. And that's an important thing to bear in mind. I put a point there about how, you know, how does this priesthood relate to the Eucharist, um, which Christ instituted at the Last Supper? And I think one of the things that we can say is one of the reasons why we even have priests now is because, you know, they're, they're now, you know, they're there, because as so long as we have, you know, things that have been instituted and laws that have been given, even if those are laws of love and mercy and truth, even if those are many of the fruits of the Spirit, if you like, that are now, uh, the watchwords of our lives. Priesthood is, is if you like, there to match that new character of our lives. We shouldn't just think of priesthood in terms of functionality at the altar, but also about a way of expressing what we believe. Priesthood as this kind of going backwards and forwards between God, a little bit like what you were saying actually, about that notion of, um, Peters, the idea of a, of a universal priesthood, a raw priesthood. So I think that's important to, to bear in mind as well, that priesthood and law, these things are mapped on to the same, um, the same, um, the same faith, the same Christian commitments. We are, um, beginning to run out of a little bit of time and I want to have just a few minutes to opportunities just to ask some open questions about what you think about priesthood generally as well. But I put on that final, um, on that, for that final quotation on the front there. Um, one of the, one of the lines that, uh, the author to the Hebrews uses to sort of try and wrap up why he thinks Christ is, uh, a better priest than any of the priests of the old law and any of the priests that we can think about or come, come, uh, come to reflect on. He says, Christ holds his priesthood permanently because he continues forever. He always lives to make intercession for them. In other words, in the Old Testament, we have the notion of a priest, just like Father Tim, who, uh, offers intercessions for the people, but ultimately doesn't live forever. He's a human being. Human beings are born, grow old, grow frail and sadly die. And yet, if we had to depend on Father Tim for all of our high priestly source of grace and, uh, and, and truth, we would be, um, on very dangerous waters indeed. And Hebrews is trying to announce it really clearly, because in the first century, people didn't really understand why priesthood needed to be one of the attributes of Christ. People just thought, well, priesthood's just what people do. I'm, I'm, I'm basically, you know, if I were of, if I were of the tribe of Levi, I would be a priest and my intercession would just be made. And that's that, and you just repeat it every so often, year by year, and you do this for this kind of, um, sin or mistake, and you do this, but, but the point that Hebrews is trying to make more than anything is that all of those, all of those temporary things, all of those things that rely ultimately on our human weaknesses, on our human limits, have been raised to a new stature by Christ, who lives always, uh, to make intercession for us. And really importantly, Jesus's intercession, Jesus's prayer, his whole life, which Father Tim was rightly describing as one of prayer and giving, is not one that's now ceased to be. It's one that's continuing to this very day in heaven. The idea that Christ is at the right hand of God, having risen, uh, the first fruits, as St Paul puts it, of our redemption. But he's there as a mediator and a redeemer today. His priesthood lasts forever. And so that's a really good bridge, if you like, a really good segue into talking about sacrifice. Sacrifice, if you like, well, how did he get, how did he get into that position? How did he get to a place where he could, um, aid us and support us from heaven, uh, maintaining, uh, by grace, a relationship, a very personal relationship with us on earth in our mortal lives? I've said there at the end, um, at the bottom of the first page, Christ's mission to save and his very nature is everlasting. His priesthood is one of love. And what are the consequences of a priesthood based on love? And I think certainly the idea that it, that it, that it's limitless and that lasts forever. It's a really important, um, aspect of that love. I'm just going to pause there as we sort of begin to draw things to a close on some of those particular points. But does anyone, whether anyone that's perhaps not spoken yet, anyone have any particular, particular, uh, um, questions or, or confusing points they'd like to raise on, on priesthood in particular? No burning questions? I think one of the things that I found really useful is, oh, sorry Maurice, go ahead. Hmm, so, so you're asking what, why is priesthood important in relation to? I say, well, I'm just going to come over because I can't quite hear what you're saying. So just, just say the question again, that's right.
Uh, that are the other possibility to make a connection between priesthood and Jesus Christ? Or how, why is the priesthood can be, uh, considered? or how, why is the priesthood can be considered in the life of Jesus?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I totally understand your point you're making. I mean, is that sort of kind of why, why do we, why do we, why do we associate priesthood with Christ at all? Why is it, why is it worth setting up those connections? Yeah, so I, I think, I think that's really important. And I think that comes back to the point that you were making earlier about, well, look, there are other authors here in the Bible who are, there are other writers talking about priesthood first of all, in a different way. But there are also, like I was saying last week, there are plenty of letters in the New Testament that don't seem to talk about priesthood whatsoever. If you read the letters of St Paul, particularly those, particularly those, the, those, those longest letters of St Paul, Romans one and two Corinthians and Galatians, they're not really interested in the notion of ours or Christ's priesthood. They're much more interested in, in righteousness, that word righteousness, that idea of being made right in the sight of God through faith and through faith that, that is given to us on the cross, that's, that's communicated to us in a very kind of particular way. So, so the alternative, if, if St Paul was standing here, one of the things he might have said to you is that, well, priesthood's really important in one sense, but it's really important to talk about the resurrection of Christ and the sacrifice of Christ as having wrought about our righteousness if we believe, if we believe in the resurrection, if we have a faith in Christ dying for us. So that's one alternative, if you like. But then secondly, we can equally say, well, there is, it isn't, it isn't a, it isn't a matter of alternatives. In fact, it's, 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 it's again this notion, which I think actually Hebrews makes very clearly. We mentioned it at the beginning of the session. The idea that all of these different aspects of our relationship to God are trying to make ourselves right in the sight of God collapses into the one personality of Jesus. You know, Hebrews earnestly believes, as I believe actually, I think Christians are called to believe, that everything that's come before, all of the signs that we've been given by God in the Old Testament, even before the Old Testament, in the way in which God works in nature and in his creation, all of those things are shadows of what is perfected in Jesus, who's a mediator, our redeemer, our advocate. All of those things, which he shows through the life that he lived in the gospel. All of those things come to a fullness in him. So, so we can say, here's one helpful way, here's another helpful way. But in terms of our life lived in Christ, in our baptism, all of those things come together in Jesus, the head of the body, which is, which is church. So interesting that you, you kind of make that theological point. I think that's really important because it's so often we can think, well, you know, priesthood might just be, priesthood, of course, I think we've got to be really, one of the things that I think Hebrews is saying here that's very important to us as Christians is about the ordering of these ideas. You know, I think it's very easy to say that all of these words that we use as Christians, righteousness, grace, love, priesthood, all of these words, some of which require about, you know, a hundred thousand books to even begin to understand. All of these things come from God first and not from us. And that's where Jesus is such a deal breaker to our faith. So I think it's really important to get the ordering right as well and not get too caught up in ideas. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. There was a lot, there was a lot there, isn't there, about, actually just visually in the mass, there's a lot there. It's about forming, you know, forming something of a pyramid up towards Jesus. You think about when the priest lifts the host at the mass, or you think about the one altar, you know, the one church, the one faith. It's the idea that we're pointed in a direction on that journey, like I was mentioning last week, that journey, pilgrimage journey of Christ. Right, in, in the danger of, of things overrunning a little bit, because it is getting later on a, a Wednesday evening, I think we'll just draw those particular reflections to a close. Like I say, next week, we're going to look at sacrifice. And I think actually the sacrifice and priesthood, they do go together. And I think it, you begin to form a bigger understanding, a better understanding of the argument of Hebrews when you do look at them together. But I think priesthood is foremost the theme of the letter, the priesthood and mediation of Christ, being of such urgent importance if we're to understand the way in which we interact and pray to God and pray with the support of Christ, who is the son of God and God. Thank you very much for those who have joined us online. Thank you to those who contributed so obviously here, thank you. It, it, it makes it such a joy to have kind of these discussions and conversations. And I look forward to seeing you next week when we talk about Christ, our sacrifice, our pastoral sacrifice. Thank you.